I would like to call this regular town council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, may I have a real call?
Counselor Danforth. Counselor Dume. Counselor Higgins.
Here via Zoom.
Counselor Mackin.
Excused.
Counselor Chair Mador.
Here.
Counselor McGowan.
Here.
And Counselor Pelletier.
Here.
Would you all please stand and remove your hats and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I see no adjustments to the agenda. Seeking approval of the minutes for the June thirteenth, twenty twenty four regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dume, second by Counselor McGowan. Any counsel discussion? Down the public? Back to the council, we'll do this as an oral vote. Counselor Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Dume. Counselor Danforth.
Aye.
Counselor McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Mador is aye unanimous. Oh, Counselor Pelletier, I'm terribly sorry.
Aye, aye.
All right. Six, six zero. All righty. Now for our special presentation, the FY twenty three audit review. We have with us. It's all yours, sir. Ron, it's all yours.
Yeah.
Can we, Ron, for the sake of expediency, can we start with the, the school part of the review?
Sure, sure, that was gonna be my first question. Can you guys all hear me?
Thank you.
Can you all hear me?
Yep, very well. Yes.
Yes.
So what I did, Pete, Peter, Shelley, did you guys provide them kind of like with the summary of all the highlights of the audit? You know, so that I could kind of like get into that and answer any questions that they have. I, I just don't know what they have in front of them, you know, whether or not they've been provided the audit or the summary that I sent up to you guys today.
Yes, they've been, they've been given all of those documents, including the summary from today.
So I won't go through a hundred plus pages of a document. So what I did is I pulled out a summary of virtually all the talking points for the, for the school and for the town. So I'm gonna start with the school. So on six thirty twenty three, you guys got our highest opinion. It's called an unmodified opinion as of six thirty two thousand twenty three. If there were any issues of fraud, defalcation, or the fact that we couldn't issue an opinion of your financial statements, you know, we would have had to have told you in that law audit letter, you know, that certainly wasn't the case. And, and again, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion at six thirty two thousand twenty three. Okay? We do two audits. We do a financial statement audit and a federal compliance audit, you know, for the town. You know, because of the wastewater projects that you guys had going on there, and because of the school and the various funding it gets from the Department of Education, we had to test three programs there. There were no issues with the town program that we had to test with the US federal government's money. So because you got over and spent three quarters of a million dollars, you know, we had to test all the programs, you know, based on the federal funding level that reaches that level. And there were no issues for the town. For the school, we found a couple of compliance matters that centered around Title One and ESER, which are two programs that we tested, you know? It was nothing major and significant, just our advice to you as you take federal money, that time documentation for those two funds, if there was a better job, you know, that certainly could have been done by the school. The good news is, is there weren't any questioned cost, you know, identified, you know, with, you know, with those two areas of testing. So because the department is a, because the school is a department of the, of the town, we put that in there, both the town and the school, you know, just to let you know that this is the town's money, specifically in regards to the school. There were a couple of compliance matters and, and again, the grants are all in the town's name on behalf of the Millinocket School Department. The, the school department has a carryover balance, little less than a million dollars, about nine hundred and seventy four thousand dollars, you know, and that's, that's pretty much right where it was, you know, as of six thirty twenty two, the year before. The school department for various, you know, budget needs and, and other items of commitments, a, a, almost half of that, a little over half of that was committed for FY twenty four special projects or budget. Food, always a good conversation point to the point now where the Department of Education and the governor, you know, are starting to police one of the other areas that's, that, that, that's, that's non-program services for kids, and that's food and nutrition. You guys got a healthy food and nutrition fund balance? You know, up until COVID, food and nutrition was one of the most underfunded federal projects that existed out there. You know, Millinocket certainly has a, 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 a profitable food service, but not to the point whereby governor standards or by federal standards, you've got too much money. Because I know for the past two years, you know, the state of Maine has been looking, giving all the money it's put into food, service and communities, you know, for, you know, for the, for the schools, you know, if they have too much money, sending it back to the state. Millinocket's not one of those school systems that we see that for. And then lastly, I would probably say for the school, as far as best practices and all that, you had some turnover in your business manager position. There was some struggle certainly in the FY twenty two audit. You know, I can definitely tell you, Shelley and Rhonda, we're all hands on deck, you know, based on what some of those struggles are that were inherited. You know, I know that we worked very diligently with them, you know, to bring twenty twenty three to conclusion and already get well underway in twenty four, get a good jump on twenty four. So, so there were some best practice issues with reconciliations, bank reconciliation. And, you know, receipts and certain student accounts, nothing that, nothing that I would say, hey, you know what, fire, fire. But definitely enough to raise my hand and, and as Shelley and Rhonda are aware and have really been diligent working with us through these matters is really kind of reconciling the numbers, you know, over on the school books, reconciling the numbers and the math with the town. You know, as a town continues to, you know, to, 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 to provide the school its funding, you know, for education, you know. So, so that was one area definitely, you know, that, you know, that really kind of snowballs from some of the issues in twenty two into twenty three. And, but, but, but I can assure you that Shelley and Rhonda were more than helpful, you know, to us, you know, in reconciling, you know, those various issues and matters and working our way through that two thousand twenty three audit, you know, to the point now where we're diligently working on the two thousand twenty four audit, you all. Those are the highlights for the school department. Certainly talking points and I'm more, I'm more than, you know, happy to take any questions anybody may have up, up and up until now, until I move into the town piece.
Does anyone from the school board? Or the council have any questions, Ron, on the school audit going forward?
Can I just add something before there's any questions? You know, one of the things that I would just say, you know, is, is that we, we do like two thirds of all the municipalities and schools in the entire state of Maine. And, 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 and their, Millinock, what Millinocket experience is very typical, you know, out there. I don't know, nobody likes to, you know, certainly kind of fall into that category, you know, but Millinocket's been able to work through it for the past couple of years, you know, and Holly's a former business manager and kind of can attest to the state of the world of government and education. You know, there's over sixty audits that, that haven't even completed their two thousand twenty three audit, and some of those go back for as many as three or four years. So it's just really, really tough and there's really a lot of struggling, you know, areas out there and the business managers, you know, positioned to, you know, to kind of, kind of land these audits there for the Department of Education. So Millinocket was able to identify its struggles, you know, it's moved through them, you know, and, and certainly able to produce and land a two thousand twenty three audit, because there's more than fifty school systems in the state of Maine, it can't say that, you know, and that number was as high as eighty, I believe, as I understood, a few months ago. So, so, so again, you know, for the awareness and recognition to, you know, kind of, you know, throw your hands up and say we're struggling and really kind of tackle it, you know, and more so in this past year and coming into twenty four, you know, I just want to get that out there as well, sorry.
No, that's very good, thank you very much, Counselor Pelletier.
Yes, Ron, your letter of July sixteen to the town council on page three of the matters. I'd like clarification of required supplementary information that you do not audit. Is there some liability that maybe should have that done?
No, no, so, so what that is, just to expand, we, we actually audit the financial statements and footnotes. There's information on retirement that's actually audited by actuaries. There's schedules in the back and it's called required supplementary information. It's additional information that's part of the document that helps the readers use that document. We actually audit all the math. But if the, i- i- if the, if there's information that's done, you know, by actuaries regarding the retirement plans, that's not through our company or, or information that the school wants to provide because it thinks it's gonna be helpful to the readers, it's called required supplementary information. Auditing procedures have been subjected to that, but because there's other factors included into that, and that's additional information that's not required to be audited, we put that in there and put that disclosure in there.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Counselor Dume.
I don't have a question, you do have a comment?
Certainly.
And I want to say this before, before we end up. The school department.
Why, what do you know? You made that sound, you made it sound very ominous, what you know.
I know what I know.
That's it, I'm out. It was the surprise twist.
No, I just want to give it a, a compliment to financial staff at the, at the school department, as well as on board. And I think that you, you all deserve an extreme credit to what you've done over at the school. Because I remember when I took over as chairman last year, there was a lot of things in question, a lot of things in doubt, and the, the relationship wasn't as good as what it is now. And so I think it's a tremendous credit, there's like, like he said, there was a, a large turnover between your finance officer and a new superintendent. And I think the work that you all have done over there, you guys deserve applause for. Because to get it all back on track is, did it, you're tremendous credit to the department and to the town. So I think that you should feel that from us. And to piggyback on that, I know that we're gonna go over from the town side, but we have a new treasurer as well, finance officer of the town of Millinocket, that's picked up from, from Mary Alice, and she's done a fabulous job as well, learning the system, keeping things on track. And also Peter has done a great job, I think financially for the town of Millinocket as well. And for, for both of these reports to come back, pretty much stellar, tells us that we do as good of a job as we can in the times that we are in. And the struggles that we are facing are national problems, not just town problems. Inflationary costs, labor costs, everything is hiring. So I think we're trying to do as best we can, we are on our track, as our auditor says. So I just, I just want to make really clear here, appreciation that we are past those things that held us behind. And I think the administration on both the school department and the town side should be calm about it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? I would like to echo your comment, because I think definitely.
Chair Mike, please.
I thought it, keep coming on. Hey, my mic is off, can you believe that? I do believe that Counselor Dume is absolutely right. I watched the struggles that happened before. You have done an exceptional job of righting the ship. Of bringing everything within compliance to be financially responsible and still provide for the children of this town as you have. I give a lot of credit to the board, I give a lot of credit to the administration. I, I think that, you know, when you get the right people in the right positions, good things happen. And it appears to me now that we have just that, we have the right people in the right positions, both on the town and on the school, good things are happening, and I look forward to this type of relationship going on for a long time. Because I, for a long time, there was a tension between the two boards, and I don't feel that anymore. And I think that is really important because we are separate but equal, and we are the two major bodies of the town. I believe the more that we can do and the more mutual respect and we have for each other and working together can only benefit the community as a whole. And with that, I'll say thank you. Anybody from the public?
Nope, none, all right. To the school board, i- i- I know you'd like to stay and be part of the entire meeting, but I understand that you have a. Certainly.
Before you close, if I could just say a comment, I, I wanted to just say thank you for the recognition, the nodding, the smiles. We really have seemed to, the chuckles. We really do appreciate the working relationship that has been allowed to foster because that doesn't just happen from one side. We appreciate Holly, who is on the screen, who has been wonderful. And Holly, I want to publicly thank you for the work you've done with Rhonda and I. You've been so inspirational, helpful with the lessons and things that you have helped us learn and grow from. So thank you very much for that. And it is wonderful having Beverly on board. I don't see her, talk to her very much, but I know that she's there for an email, even on a Sunday, seems to be there for an email. And Rhonda has gained information and knowledge from her. So I agree, I appreciate what you've said, but it is a two week strike, so we thank you for your effort as a town.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so I, thank you very much for your time on this. And Ron, if you want to move on to the municipal side, we will do just that.
Yeah, certainly, certainly I'll move on to the municipal side, you know, now. The, the, the town, again, you know, as well as the school department, received their highest opinion and unmodified opinion, you know, as of June thirty two thousand twenty three. There were no town compliance findings with the spending of its federal funds that went through the town for a variety of special projects that we tested. The town had a general fund carryover balance of about six point two million dollars. It's up a little more than three hundred, about three hundred thousand dollars from the prior year. Okay, you know, but of that, a million and a half was dedicated towards various projects at the town and carry forwards, a lot of them infrastructure projects, you know, which really kind of brings the, you know, town undesignedated fund down, fund downs down to about four point seven million dollars. We like to see that thirty, sixty, ninety days, you know, of your operating budget, and you're at probably more like a hundred and fifty, hundred and eighty days, which I think is a very financial healthy condition to be in. And the one caveat that I would probably say about that, and the one area that I think that I would probably say, you know, look at me at the town of Millinocket, you know, where you might be light in, you know, there where especially now, with this new stimulus package out there, kind of the la- last, the last residual of the COVID funds that was released back in the infrastructure Build Back America package, your capital reserve funds. You know, I think you got some money, you got some operational money for wastewater, but a variety, you know, and I know you've got probably somewhere around three hundred thousand dollars for a variety of, you know, a, a different department capital expenses set aside. I'd say that's probably one area that I'd like to see a little bit more concentration on while you have the general fund balance unassigned that you do. It's kind of looking at your capital needs, redirecting that. This state's got two point five billion dollars in it, you all to spend over the next three years after this last round of ARPA, you know, gets exhausted this year, you know, and we see a lot of towns kind of using their unrestricted money, you know, out there to go get and take advantage of and put themselves in advantage for, whether it be road projects, water, wastewater, building, HVAC, just a variety of projects that are, that are what the world of government municipalities are experiencing. That's one area that I would probably say, take a look at. You've got a healthy wastewater department, you know, for sure, that has money, you know, put in there. And I think that that is certainly, you know, kudos to the town, sure, for sure. You know, I'm putting your, putting one of your enterprise funds, you know, dealing with wastewater, you know, in that position financially. And then lastly, I would say, you guys went through some turnover with a retirement of your longstanding finance director. It was great to work with Mary Alice, she had a great command, you know, on the numbers, on the math, and really the best practices. And, you know, and Bev has inherited, you know, that, you know, that, that chair now. And we look forward to working with Bev too, you know, to help her out with her progression and whatever we may do to help out her and Peter, you know, as they kind of, you know, provide you guys business information so you guys can make good business decisions out there. We look forward to being that partner out there available to you all as well, so. Hats off to Mary Alice, she really, she really delivered, you know, another good product for us to audit. And hats off to Beverly for maintaining it, and we look forward to working with Beverly as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the auditors from the council on the town side, Counselor Danforth?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, but I have a comment, and Ron, thank you, thank you, thank you for the, the great report out, because it is just great news. I would, if I continued to talk, it would just be reiterating what Counselor Dume has already said and Counselor Mador. It's good news that you provided, and a lot of it has to do with the staff that we have on board. So just very thankful for both the school side and the municipal side. For those of you that know best practices and following back best practices and keeping us where we need to be. Thank you for the reminder about those infrastructure funds that are available and reminding us to look at our capital budget, because we have lots of needs.
Go get them, go get them.
What's that?
Go get them, lot of money out there, go get them. Can you hear me? Go get them, go get that money.
Yep.
It's a good thing we have a full-time staff to do that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else from the council? From the public? Ron, thank you very much, and Holly, for, you know, next time, Holly, I want you to keep it down a little bit, as far as chiming in. But thank you both very much for this, it was a great report, and we look forward to seeing you again this time next year.
Look forward to it, Holly, say something so they can hear that.
Thank you. With everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Good news travels fast and bad news unfortunately travels faster. But let's move on to the manager's report.
Yeah, before I jump in, oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, before I jump in, I just want to make sure Counselor Danforth understands the push on the infrastructure funds and the assigned funds and how healthy it is and the investment into infrastructure related expenditures. This is supposed to be funny, I'm sorry, this is like a whole back and forth we have. I want to spend on things, she says it's not good enough.
Leave the comedy to the professor.
Sorry.
You're a comedian, I'm a comedian.
Right. Okay, so, when it comes to real work. So I mentioned the solar project several meetings ago. As a source of leased acreage and revenue for the Elks parcel that we purchased, we made quite a bit of progress on that today. I met with their team and was joined by our code officer and our assessor. We, you know, reviewed bits of, of the lease agreement and the proposed solar ordinance and learned more about how other towns are handling it. So we have some great advice on tweaking and amending the proposed ordinance with the planning board, which will be going to a public hearing in the near future, yes? Getting the nod of confirmation from Tom. So we are a lot closer to signing that agreement or proposing that agreement to the council for permission to sign. And it'll be nice to start seeing that parcel producing revenue and paying itself off as all investments should. We're gonna, oh, and my next article should be in next week's paper for those that are anxiously awaiting the next edition. So second meeting of the month, we talk about departments a lot more. Public Works has been doing a lot of great stuff around town. They have just about completed the new bench installation over here in GNP Park next to the municipal building. Those are beautiful new composite, weather resistant, easily cleaned.
No painting.
No, no old hundred layers of paint on them. Those, those look great, they did a wonderful job making it as level as possible with the condition that those bricks are in. And then we ended up having a few extra benches that we, oh, and two of those, one of those was over here at, to replace the one in front of the municipal parking lot. We decided that we didn't need as many benches in GNP Park over here, so we were able to add a couple of nice benches over in the dog park to allow for some seating over there for the large group of community members that convenes there pretty regularly. So very. The pair of Kataton Avenue the other day, and, you know, as they were digging and investigating, they found the water source for the old swimming hole pond that used to be there. Think there are some included in the council packet, but they're probably not great quality. So I do want to just bring a couple up and show what that because it was pretty incredible.
Yeah.
A little glimpse into
History?
Into our history, yeah, so. From
The underground fee for the bond, yeah.
The other side of Kataton Avenue where the houses are across from the park, that's the, that's where they started digging. You can see in this area where my cursor is, that's where the old brick had collapsed, causing the sinkhole. And it runs just straight down into the park, what, from, from Ferguson Lake up there. And it used to fill a swimming pool. And then when you get underneath it, you can see that this thing was constructed entirely out of these giant slabs of granite that were just, you know, in our past, that was just the raw material, you know? It was used freely for so many things. This is another view from inside the the water line there, and if you look up this, this pipe at the top, that was actually a propane line, was used to feed all the streetlights and stuff in people's houses along that corridor to and from the mill. It, it was pretty incredible to see and actually be able to get down in there and take some photos. I appreciated Brian and his team inviting me over to check it out. And then, let's see, I think one more really cool photo from underneath there that shows a little further in, and this one, you can really see those individual slabs of granite. I mean, the walls were made of the granite, the slabs were the, the top of the granite that the, the land was then filled back over. And up until, I think, the thirties, it produced this pond in Veterans Park that was used for swimming and ice skating and, and pretty cool. I've heard about this pond many times. and, uh, pretty cool. I've heard about this pond many times over the years, but I, I'd never seen anything but.
The Historical Society has some old pictures of people skating on that pond and that, yeah.
So that was cool. And then Public Works Crew did their thing and fixed it all up. Let me go back again to my report. I'm going to screen share once more in a, in a little bit, but, moving through, we've got, um, you know, I wanted to mention all of the work that, that, that Bev's been doing from her treasurer, treasurer's office. You know, she's been working with Ron and his team to, to complete that audit. Um, and you know, that was quite a bit of work and you know, lately she's been, amount of work on the July twenty fourth, um, and of course the quarterly ending, um, reports as well. Uh, and as you've heard from the auditors, she's, uh, doing us a great job. Tom in code enforcement. He's again, uh, working to finalize that solar, ordinance, uh, which is shaping up really well. I know the planning board had, a meeting where they reviewed the first draft of it. Um, and then of course our meeting earlier today will offer some tweaks and, um, they should get, a finalized draft to propose, um, during special hearings. Uh, the airport is recording, as of the date of this report, um, a hundred and thirty-eight aircrafts. That was through the eighteenth. Which is a great number for this time of year. Um, ab gas sales are steady. And they're already into their second load of, of gas for the season. Jet fuel sales are also good and increasing. Uh, unfortunately, there's some relation to an increase of rescues on the mountain, um, from that. So not entirely, but you know, there's, that plays into it. So things are going great over there. Community initiatives. The CDBDG facade program applications are live as of, I think yesterday on our website and has been shared on our social media and our emails. We certainly encourage commercial property owners in the community or those, leasing commercial property with approval from, the commercial property owner, um, to apply for that. It's up to twenty-five related projects, um, and, we have about a little over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to, give to these property owners in total, uh, for these projects. They are also working on the, end of summer pool party, which was started last year and, uh, was a huge hit. So that's coming up August fifteenth. From one to four, uh, there's free food and lawn games and music. Uh, also doing the back to school, school supply giveaway. Uh, that is going to be August seventeenth from eleven to two. The events team and Amber have, um, this year reached out to our neighboring communities and got, and in participation from East, Medway, they be, contributed, uh, um, services students from all of our communities. And, uh, the other towns, I don't think there was any, any argument. They were, they were all in. Uh, they have a goal of assisting two hundred students this year. Uh, last year was a hundred and forty-one. So we're, we're hoping that with more supplies and, and more outreach, um, that would work. There's also, um, our Katotan has also contributed that to that Katotan Federal Credit Union, um, and a local family, the Jamesons. So. Uh, oh, one more from, the issues director. So the Skeeto project, right? The budget has been a concern about the Skeeto project, uh, for a while now because of, the original plan, budget, and then the couple of years it's taken us to get to the point where we're implementing it. So we were at a point where we were thinking that we were, likely going to have to hold off on the warming hut, hut piece of that. Um, to make sure that we had the electrical work, paid for and completed and the, the machine in place for this winter. And then we would, uh, regroup and, and figure out the funding for the warming hut. Well, so Rick, Rick Waziken, and Rick Lacks, um, local trades folk, uh, have offered to, volunteer their time to do the electrical work and the groundwork, um, included in getting that established. And Rick has also had some conversation with Gilman Electrical Supply out of, and they are going to be offering the supplies to do that at a very discounted rate as well. So we're, their generosity, um, is saving us a boatload of funding for that. So it's looking like we'll be able to, complete the entire project, uh, for this coming winter with the, the warming hut and all. So, um, I'd, I'd really like to just acknowledge them, uh, publicly for their, um, their giant hearts and generosity. Really that, that's, that was an incredible phone call to get. They, uh, came forward and offered to do that work for us. Um, I'm going to jump over to the town clerks department, uh, nomination papers. It's that time of year. Nomination papers are available tomorrow, July twenty-sixth. Um, they will need to be returned. This is for two council seats, uh, and one school board seat. So you can take your nomination papers out as early as tomorrow, return them by September sixth at four P M. Um, there are, board seat up for grabs this year. Certainly encourage those in the community to put their, their, air and, and try their hand at this civic duty stuff. It's always a good time. Um, as there's also, couple of, uh, seats on the rec advisory committee available. So we're looking to fill, one full seat and one partial term, that will expire in March of twenty-five. So please, if you're interested in helping the rec department move forward, we would love to see some, uh, committee applications come through. Uh, I'm going to do one more quick screen share be from the fire department because, uh, Chief Cody reached out to me yesterday about, um, a really cool training they were going to do. And most, well, he reached out to me to invite my son because, I think he likes him better, but, um, he knows that Andrew just really loves this stuff. So we took a ride over and watched them, do this training. Um, it was continuing on with the, uh, regional training efforts. That, Chief Cody has been, um, playing a lead role in. So there were, representatives from, several fire departments in our area, uh, to back Astor's High School, uh, learning how to extinguish, a large liquid propane fire. Um, so you can see in this picture, that unit right there was fed with, um, a large amount of liquid propane and then it was set on fire. And the goal was for the class to extinguish that fire. This here is a picture of all the firefighters, uh, from different towns in the area. We'll wait for the, screen to catch up over there. You can see members, team there, East Millenock, Lumpkeg was there, uh, Oak as far as Oakfield. Yeah, it was quite a turnout. Um, and then, lit it on fire and put it out. So those flames are, at the beginning are well over ten feet in the air. And you can see the team there, uh, running two hoses on it, working together. Uh, these are all students in the, in the firefighting class, um, approaching it and, and extinguishing that fire. It was really cool to watch, you know, we, and probably cool to participate in. Um, I know that, he's in the, that was showing up for the class seemed really excited about it. And I just, you know, I, continue to commend, uh, Chief Cody for bringing this stuff here and, and, uh, continuing to further train our, crew and, and crews from all over the area. With that said, um, the library monthly update is attached and, uh, East Millenock Police Department attached that. Um, take any questions or comments?
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the manager's report? Many councils, Council of May?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, please turn the mic on. Backwards first on the community initiatives, uh, playing the back to school supply giveaway events. Think that's a great program to have and thank you for you and your staff for reaching out to the other communities to see if they want to participate in it. I was one of the councils that be out of town again, but I encourage any council member that hasn't been to one of these events. Go to it. It's quite impressive to see a couple hundred children now and their parents all come through and they're all very grateful and, it was a good time. So I encourage anybody to be that, that has the time to do it, of course. Um, the next one is under the code enforcement. Um, I just would like to see there's, uh, continue to be in constant contact with Mr. Benjamin concerning property one eighty-one in Alderweireld Avenue. And follow up on Penquess Housing. Would you please advise us on how those conversations are going, either you or Tom? Thank you.
So. Um, with Penquess, um, I have spoken to Mr. Jason Byrd, um, several times recently. And we expect to have him on a council agenda in the next, two or three meetings, uh, to provide an update on that project. Um, it seems everything is, uh, still moving forward. The, setback that they've shared with me is, related to the ongoing increase in costs and trying to, cut back on the spending, um, and having to go back to the engineering team several times to, find different materials or designs to use. So. Yes, in the next couple of meetings, he should be here, uh, to give an update more detailed and, and, uh, on point than mine. Um, with Mr. Benjamin, we, are still in the understanding that, he is not, allowed to move forward on that yet. Um, I have done some outreach, through our insurance, uh, towards his, um, there's still a few unknowns, but we are working diligently on it and hope to have an update in the near future that we can, discuss a little more openly.
Thank you.
All set. Thank you. Anyone else from the council? Anything for the manager's report? Just like to go ahead and tell, say that I think the new benches in the, uh, great, uh, very northern parks and here by the E B charters look incredibly much better than what was there. And, uh, I would like to go ahead and see more of those benches. Possibly matriculate their way up to Veterans Memorial Park as well to replace some of the older ones that are up there.
Oh, I think we can do.
Uh, Public Works, I, I saw the backwards at Hillcrest. They look great. It really looks a lot, like that they did down a little, really great job with that. I look forward to updates on the solar farm agreement and, uh, getting that taken care of. Uh, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, congratulate our code enforcement officer and, uh, obtaining his certifications, uh, that he's been going with. If you've already touched, Council of May touched on my question with Penquess, uh, that project there. Uh, I would like to go ahead and to, uh, take the time to talk about, uh, our, uh, community initiative director. And the great job that she's doing and the fact that I, the, she went to East Millenock and Medway, to reach out to them to join us in the, uh, getting school supplies for children. And the fact that I would like to thank East Millenock and Medway both for coming up and I believe it was five hundred dollars a piece from each community, to add to the total for, uh, this is a great project and it is really something that has been, much needed in the community. And my understanding is last year, we even had someone come down from, I believe it was Mount Chase or Katotan, that we, that's how far this is reaching out to. So, and providing school supplies to a child up there. So I mean, this is something that we, the community needs. I'm glad we're doing it and I look forward to, bigger and better this year. Uh, congratulations to all involved in that. Other than that, I'm all set. Anybody from the community have any questions or comments on the manager's report? Seeing none. All right. We'll move on. Councilor Pelletier, can I please get you to read order one seventy-one dash twenty twenty-four?
Order number one seventy-one dash twenty twenty-four, providing for prior year town war for July twenty fifth, twenty twenty-four. It is ordered the prior year town war by twenty twenty twenty-four, an amount of thirty thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. Give by approved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Pelletier, second by Councilor McGowan. Uh, any hitters on that one, Councilor Pelletier?
Sure. Uh, water bill was twenty-four hundred three dollars five cents. Uh, the new pump came in at thirteen thousand nine dollars ninety-nine cents. And first power bill twelve thousand thirty-six.
Thank you. All right. Any comment on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council. We'll do this by oral vote. Councilor Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Pelletier. Council of May. Danforth.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
And Chair Madore, aye, it passes six zero. Council Pelletier, can I please get you to read order one seventy-two dash twenty twenty-four?
Order, one seventy-two dash twenty twenty-four, by, institution of prior year, which water warrant, July twenty fifth, twenty twenty-four. This was prior year, which water warrant, July twenty fifth, twenty twenty-four, an amount of forty, about four hundred twenty dollars sixty-six cents hereby.
Second.
Second made by Council Pelletier, second by Council McGowan. Oh, Council Pelletier, any hitters on that one?
Yeah, by thousand nine hundred twenty nine dollars and five cents to ounce by night to clean sewer main. Thousand hundred seventy dollars, clear water laboratory, take testing of water quality at wastewater plant.
Very good. Any council comment or discussion on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council. Council Higgins?
Aye.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Council de May.
Aye.
Council Pellet. Aye. Counselor Danforth.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
And Chair Midora, aye, it's unanimous, six zero. Council McGowan, can I please get you to read order one seventy three dash twenty twenty four?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number one seventy three to twenty twenty four. Providing for execution of the town warrant for July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. It is ordered that the town warrant for July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, in the amount of three hundred sixty two thousand seven hundred. Eighty seven dollars and ninety eight cents is.
Council McGowan, second by Council Danforth, Council McGowan, I assume there must be some good ones in this one.
There are several. Uh, fifty five thousand nine forty five seventy four to Van Gogh Savings Bank. That is our, our Katatin financing. Twenty four thousand to Sims Corp, which looked like that was um plow truck maintenance. Twenty one thousand one hundred thirteen dollars and fourteen cents to main municipal association. That's our. Thirty seven thousand on the contract, five thousand eighty six ninety three municipal police solutions disposal fees. Three thousand three hundred forty four to register of deeds, uh lean cost. And two hundred twelve thousand two eighteen fifty to the town of East Millinocket quarterly payment on our police contract.
Thank you. Uh, any council, council comment on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council. Council Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye. Aye.
Council Pelletier.
Aye.
Council de May. Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Midora is aye, it's unanimous, six zero. Council McGowan, can I please get you to read order one seventy four dash twenty twenty four?
Yes. Order number one seventy four dash twenty twenty four, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, in the amount of two thousand five hundred fifty five dollars and sixty eight cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Council McGowan, second by Council Danforth. Any hitters on this one?
Uh, just one, two thousand eighty eight seventy one to main municipal association. That's again the workers' comp.
Thank you. Any council comment on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council. Council Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Pelletier.
Aye.
Council de May.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Midora is aye, it's unanimous, six zero. Thank you. Counselor de May, can I please get you to read order one seventy five dash twenty twenty four?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, order number one thirty five dash twenty twenty four, providing for adoption of youth ambassador policy. Whereas the town of Millinocket seeks inclusion of a voice of, for the youth of the community to join in council discussion. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council adopts the attached youth ambassador policy, identifying parameters for the role and relationship. Town manager, town council.
Second.
Second. Motion made by Council de May, second by Council. Okay, a- any uh, any council discussion on the order? Council Danforth.
I'll just make a comment. I appreciate the work that the manager did um in getting this to us so quickly so that we can put this right in motion tonight. So. Job well done. Exciting. New stuff for us.
Anybody else? Andrew, you're gonna be up here pretty soon, sitting here, and as I have already stated to you. Even though you are not a, gonna be a voting member of this council.
Yeah, we think that's the next.
Nobody's disappointed.
That's the next order.
Oh, anyway, you're gonna be up here eventually and I fully, fully expect you to be uh.
Maybe.
A.
As long as the bolt pass.
It will pass. I have faith.
You can't say.
I have faith. I liked.
Oh, my God.
Jesus, take the wheel. It's okay.
The ball of that.
All right.
Anyway.
I'd like that streken from the.
All right. So, any council comment on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council. Council Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Pelletier.
Aye.
Council de May.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Midora is aye, it's unanimous, six zero. Council Danforth, can I please get you to read order one seventy six dash twenty twenty four?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, order number one seventy six dash twenty twenty four, providing for appointment of youth ambassador. Whereas the town of Millinocket seeks inclusion of a voice for the youth of the community to join in council discussion in the form of a youth ambassador. And whereas the Millinocket School Department Administration and staff have strongly recommended Andrew Hallett for involvement with the Millinocket Municipal Government. Which led to discussion and vetting with the town manager. It is ordered, the Millinocket Town Council, at the recommendation of the town manager, appoints Andrew Hallett. As the Millinocket Town Council's youth ambassador for a one-year term. Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, second by Council McGowan. A council comment on the order? Seeing none. Down to public. Back to the council. Counselor Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Pelletier.
Aye.
Council de May.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Midora is aye, it's unanimous, six zero. Now I can welcome you, Andrew.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, with. Swapping clerks for the evening. Uh. Okay, so we're. Yeah, okay. We're changing our.
No.
She's filming it.
We can wait. That's fine.
Of course.
You should. Yeah. I think it's appropriate. We could all be. Yeah.
We could.
We could all be.
Yeah, we should probably share.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, but you need a photographer.
Scott will do it.
Doc can do it. John can do it. How can Andrew do it? He's gonna take. Okay, yes. Oh, did I?
The Bob probably doesn't, you know.
Yeah, you know.
This is. Did Diana take this? She should know there's a guy in our last name. He was years of good dreams. Oh, by the way, matriculate means to graduate college.
Uh, matriculate through your education?
I had to Google it. So like, I've never heard that word.
Never heard the word matriculate or matriculation?
No, it means to graduate.
Which is not the right thing.
It sounded very appropriate.
Well, it can be used for a lot of things too.
When he was talking about the benches.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a progression. Whether it's going through school, uh, you can matriculate.
I didn't even know. But like, no, I didn't notice.
So when Monday do you wanna?
It's this Monday.
Yeah, but when, morning, afternoon?
No, it's five o'clock after I, after we get out of work. I know you don't work that day.
Meet down to, meet down in your place then.
Yeah, where?
Yeah.
I'll tell, I'll. I'll let his face there.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. He'll probably meet us right here in town.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll come down to, I'll come down to the store then and leave my truck there and we can go, go there. Okay. I will write it down in my book because if I don't write it down, I would not.
As long as four and three of us don't ride together enough.
Well, we, we can ride. We just can't talk.
Right. Well, I can't guarantee that you won't talk.
Oh, you've got fingers to point. Yes. Yes.
Uh, could you invite the?
Andrew, would you please come down front? To be sworn in?
I will swear or affirm. I will swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution. That will support the Constitution. And obey the laws of the United States. And obey the laws of the past. And the state of me. And the state of me. That I will in all respects. That I will always say. Observe the provisions of this charter. Observe the provisions of the charter. And ordinances of the town of Millinocket. And ordinances of the town of Millinocket. Both faithfully discharge the duties of the office. Faithfully discharge the duties of the office. Awesome. Great.
Shall we matriculate down front?
Oh, that matriculation feels good. Everything can be.
All right, well over, Andrew. Picture with the long crowd here.
All righty, after that's all done, uh, reports and communications, the warrant committee for the August eighth, twenty twenty. For council meeting will be Council Danforth and Council de May, and I have you covered. Uh, any chair committee reports?
I, I actually, I don't have, I don't have a chair committee report. Just, just remind me. Okay, I'll come up with one.
All right.
Going to the artist's in the farmer's market on Saturday, ninety two, down in Veterans Park.
Thank you.
Happening, yes.
Council Pelletier.
The child review committee met on uh Monday, the twenty second. Legal to the first. For the first review of the uh plan, presentation of the. Recommendation paid by the committee and got to put in education. They changed some recommendations to the legal aspect of them and. Uh, had to put off some questions. For the, for the legal tabs, further consultation, some of the staff. And whether or not putting it in charter or keeping it in a policy uh statement. Is the best way to go was. So we got, that's been a full review to do and the second uh second. Review will occur on. August nineteenth at five thirty. So you got town manager's office available, why is it not?
Okay, thank you. No other reports. All right, we'll move on to the two-minute public comment and. Uh, again, remind people that too many public comment, you have two minutes to uh make a statement, ask questions. Uh, please direct them completely to the council as a whole and not any individual counselor. And uh, we, if you have questions, if we cannot answer them this evening, we will answer them at the next available meeting. So does anybody have anything for the two-minute public comment? Seeing none. All right, I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn. So who?
Second.
Motion made by Council de May, second by Council Danforth. Uh, Council Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council de May, uh, Council Pelletier.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Midora, aye, it's unanimous, we are adjourned.